Okay, we're all set. As required by the Public Meetings Act of nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice, this meeting was provided on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one by providing notice to the Express Times and Star Ledger and putting up said notice in municipal building on the same date. Mayor Barseny?
Here.
Mr. Baylor?
Here.
Mr. Beam?
Here.
Mr. Marqueta?
Here.
And Mrs. McDermott, I just text her to try that other link.
Okay, okay. And then Joe Mexion?
No.
He's not here yet?
You know what? Let me text Joe as well because he's probably going to the other one. Let me email Joe and Lillian again right now with the new link.
Okay. Anybody have anything they want to talk about while we're waiting?
Here's Lillian.
Okay, there she is. All right, let me text Joe now. Hey, Joe, there's a, there's a new link for this budget meeting. I just emailed it to you. Yeah, I sent you a new email. It's also on the website if that's easier. Okay. Got it? Okay, all right, bye. Joe should be coming on.
Joe's get done and get rest. Looks like he's gonna have a good couple of days, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The snow changed course overnight. I went to bed last night. They kind of thought it was going south. I woke up this morning and they're now they're saying it's gonna come north or a little bit more north.
Yeah, went to sleep last night. We were three to six. This morning we're eight to twelve.
Yeah.
Oh, God, worse than the night makes, huh?
Well, they're still not sure of the track yet. There's still a chance that the high pressure keeps it a little bit south of us, but.
Yeah.
What leads me to believe, though, that the number's got to be larger than smaller is the fact that it is just gonna start all intents purpose to snow showers tomorrow evening, but, you know, when it snows for eighteen, nineteen hours, six inches is usually not what it drops.
Yeah, and it's so cold, the first drop's gonna stick.
Absolutely.
Here's Joe. Joe, whenever you're ready to go, we're ready. Take your time, though. I don't want to rush you.
He's still connecting.
Ah, okay. Hurry up and take your time.
Did he hear you, Bob?
I don't know. Is he, is he on yet, Frank?
Uh. Sometimes he connects two times with a phone because he has problems with his audio. I don't see his phone number.
Joe, you on? Can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm here.
So we're ready to go wherever you are.
Oh, I'm, I'm the lead man, huh?
Yes.
You're the only one that's really.
You're the only guy.
Uh, I guess I should just start with the DPW?
Yep, whatever you want to do.
Okay, well, the forms and stuff that I set in, I'm not looking for any increase in the DPW operating and expense budget. Last year I didn't get to spend it all. COVID probably had part to do with that. But I think everything that I need to do this year, I can get done with what was appropriated last year. Couple new things in there I'm gonna, I'd like to do outside or within the budget is I found a rental for a sucker truck to start doing a thorough cleaning of the storm drains. That's probably, that's gonna be in the area of three thousand dollars for the week, but compared to owning one of them trucks at four hundred thousand dollars just to use for a couple weeks a year would be significant savings and be the first venture, but see how much I can get done in a week. We could do it to every other year, do sections of the town and probably get it done in three years and just keep rotating. The sister or the cycle to clean up storm drains. Like I said, that could come out of the road O and A. The other thing I'd like to do with the road O and E instead of outside of cap, since we've lost the old school parking lot, which we do the township cleanups and we do the, do a lot of other things up there, including use it for parking for when the park pavilion was being used is to build a yard, like a construction yard out here above the basketball courts out behind the new DPW shop, strip the topsoil, put some heavy tracking stone in and some QP in there and then get some cement barricades and stuff and make a couple bins. And that's where we'll conduct the township cleanup. I don't know if anybody come to clean up last fall when we did it out here behind the municipal building, but it was really compact, tight, even made it tough to get into the gas pumps. So we need some kind of yard or something like that where I can put them dumpsters that people can come in. And then, of course, I'll use it for storage supplies and stuff. That there also out of the DPW budget, I'm figuring with baking a couple cement pads so I can keep like the coal patch on and extra stone and stuff is probably in the area of, let's see here, I got it written down. About eight thousand dollars. The area would be a hundred and fifty feet by eighty feet. That includes getting.
Joe, where? Where exactly were you planning on doing this?
Above the basketball court in that grass area between there and the old barnyard.
Hey, Joe?
Yes.
How, how hard or how much more, if I'm just, it's a stupid question, just say it. You think it's worthwhile to start looking up behind where we're looking at the firehouse and stuff back in there to start for something like this? And eventually I would like to go to where we would have a drop off or even grass cuttings and leaves and things like that in the future. You think it's worth putting that eight thousand and getting that started or you think? I guess I'm worried it's gonna look a little unsightly down there by the park and everything. It's right in the middle of town.
Um, well, the only thing that I was looking at was convenience. We do something up there right now without nothing there. How do we stop the illegal dumping?
Well, I guess like anything else, we try to put two posts in with a chain across or something like that when you close at the end of the day or I, I don't know. I, I'm just throwing it out there because I think, I think that's eventually where we should be looking to go for a like composting and things like that. And I'm just wondering if it would be worthwhile just to start with this process now, too.
That, I gotta understand that, but this here is more, more what I have to do with my supplies that I have right now.
Well, you're gonna need that area for storage anyway is what you're saying basically, right?
Correct, because right now we have.
Or it would get stolen.
Yeah, we have a, we have a gentleman's agreement with Sam Santini for that barnyard. But if something happens there and we give them a certificate of insurance, something happens there. All right now, all my storm drain supplies, my pipe and stuff like that is up there right now. And my coal patch, because I got it, the plants are closed, so I get a couple ton before they close up and I store it right there.
Okay, no, I, I just like throw it out there. So it sounds like what you're.
The other, the other thing that we got to start thinking about, too, is this park doesn't have any parking. So not, I gotta use that area, but we might have to transform this old basket, or the basketball court into a parking lot for the park and then move the basketball court somewhere.
Yeah.
Back further or take the little baseball field out and put the basketball court over there with all the other playground equipment that's there.
Right, right. Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry I interrupted. I just.
Nope, that's fine. More questions, the better. Um, and then like I said, no changes in that, but I have a lot of storm drain, storm pipes to put in for this year. Paul's aware of the issue up on Palmer Street. That's a, that's a priority because we had complaints about that and the drain and the pipe is old and rotted out and stuff. And I have a few that I want to put on Ravine Road and things. Truck, truck maintenance wise and everything on my, on the DPW expenses. I know according to the CFO's report and what I've put out there, some numbers have changed. And that's, and some things got taken out of areas because I didn't get integrated into the admin system and start tracking my stuff until about midway through the year, June, July, August. So some of the stuff that was purchased was out of, out of different line items that was, should have been trapped. For example, reimbursement of the steel and stuff to the county for the replacement decking of former street bridge. They took that out of the first line, maintenance supplies. I, I consider that streets and roads improvements because it's on a street and road and that, and that was a reimbursement to the county for over twenty-one thousand dollars. Twenty-one thousand nine hundred and some odd dollars. So that's why that streets, maintenance supplies. I consider my maintenance supplies, my weed killers and things, anything that we would need to use on the street supply lines. But with the, just with the changes and what I'm appropriating in them line items, I'm still, like I said, at the same, the same budget number for this year.
Joe, I got a quick question for you.
Sure.
You were, you were saying with like the basketball courts, because I know like the Booster Club is gonna propose something coming up about maybe resurfacing the basketball court. So you're saying maybe move it to the baseball field?
I think, well, just, just my thought over at the Little Pony Field and maybe we could utilize maybe one of the other schools that ain't being utilized for pony baseball or something like that. Like I said, I know, I know baseball, I guess baseball is what I've seen with setting up fields and stuff is the curve has fallen on baseball. I know the T-ball thing is pretty good, but
Yeah.
Schwartzville Middle School is not being used at all, that one middle field that's a, a baseball field or anything.
Okay. Yeah, because I know that's what they were gonna propose, something down there. Resurfacing that, that area, but if we can maybe move it, I think that would work, too.
Well, yeah, just one thing on that. So, I mean, that park's already small. And I think it's, you know, for what it is, it's a very nice little park. I would hate to take away any space from it to put in parking or anything like that. I mean, I know Bob had mentioned the other location. I mean, I would be more open to trying to move whatever we have to do to that other location and not take away and turn what's a nice little park into more parking and storage. And I just wouldn't, I'd be ashamed to take away anything from that park.
Well, here's, here's the only thing with that. Even if I leave that grass up there, you're still not addressing the parking that we lost behind the old school for the park or pavilion stuff.
Yeah.
We don't own the old school and what's gonna happen, we know how it goes. You parked on my property, this and that. We only have an alley right away in the back now. That whole parking lot is not the town property. We have the good fortune that, and I know the prior minister to the Presbyterian Church, he was getting upset over the parking being deducted for the park usage.
Yeah.
You know, if something like that happens, really the park has no parking.
Right.
I'd sit right now besides the municipal building.
Yeah, well, maybe amenable to making additional parking like above where the basketball court is, but personally, I wouldn't want to move the basketball court to take away even more space. I know we have to look, we'd have to take a, a look at it, at some kind of a.
I, I think we're gonna have to look into moving that back anyway because that came up last year or two years ago, Joe, didn't it? The year, it's, it's crowded your building a little bit, isn't it?
Yeah, well, the, we made the building a little bit bigger and the only, only other thing is making a parking lot behind that. You have no road access. It's all blocked off. We got a small area out here between the slot set and stuff, but that's where I access my equipment. You'd be building a road through there, driving up through the backside and down into the back for a parking lot.
Right.
Uh, it's, I mean, I would hate to make that park smaller than what it is. That's, I don't know where everybody else stands on it, but.
Well, I agree, but there is, there is a parking. So I knew that was gonna happen when we sold the old school. That was gonna be an issue, but I'm certainly not sorry already old school. That was an albatross, but I knew that was gonna be an issue when we got rid of that school. And I do know in the past that the, the church, you know, they, I think the year they did the repaving and stuff, they repaved their whole parking lot brand new and, and then everybody was using it for parking and we really can't blame them for feeling like. Right, Joe? That's when that came up about the time they repaved, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. On that parking lot and, and the town uses it more than the parishioners.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they had a fair point there. That wasn't, certainly wasn't an unfair point.
Yeah, but that, I mean, that has, one has nothing to do with the other. I mean, nobody should be parking there and, you know.
Well, but I mean, yeah, but I, I guess the issue is how do we resolve the parking issue then?
Yeah, but that, yeah, they should never be parking there anyway, but.
It's kind of like the issue is like, what good's a park without parking and you don't want to take park away to make parking and that's what our dilemma is. So I guess we're just have to figure out how to get around that somehow or.
I mean, there is parking if you're willing to park up Greenwood Street.
Are you on the street?
What's that?
On the street, South.
Yeah, on the street, yeah. Do it all the time. Do it for a lot of things. I mean, you go all the way up Greenwood Street on there.
Yeah.
I don't mean, I just think it's a, it's a nice park and it's small as it is and to take away anything from it isn't the idea to do. Just one person's opinion.
Well, I mean, I, I guess the other question is, do they need that park for Little League Baseball anymore? I mean, that's when it gets crowded, right? It's for baseball. That's the only time. That's the only, that's the only organized sport going on there, I believe, right?
Yes.
So i- if we could relocate Little League Baseball.
Which is what he was at, you'd have to do it anyway.
You would put the.
Even if he did this solution, you'd have to redo the baseball. So why don't we just do that and not take away from the park if that's the issue?
Yeah. Okay.
All right, um, so like I said, we could start looking into doing something then up there at the new property and stuff, but I do know probably if we do do that, it might be a little bit more than what I planned here because we're probably gonna have to go to the county and get a, either a driveway entrance or a road opening permit because that is county road.
Right.
I don't know what that entails. Mike Finelli probably answered that.
Okay.
Well, it probably entails that they're not gonna like it because there's two entrances to the municipal building already and then two hundred feet later, we're asking for another entrance.
Why wouldn't they? I'm sorry, why, why wouldn't they like it?
Because you're already, actually you have three. You got the one that goes in behind cannonballs. We got two good in the municipal building, then another hundred feet, two hundred feet, we're asking for another one. That's a lot of.
It'd be at the new location he's talking about, right? Wouldn't be there.
Yeah, yeah. If we, if we put this yard up at the new location, we gotta.
I don't think that would be an issue. I think we'd be able to get the entrance ingress.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I thought we were still talking downtown, so.
No, no, it's just that, like I said, I don't know what's involved in that and probably have to have the engineer involved with that.
Right.
Where, where we have the existing driveways.
Might, it might adjust your firehouse setting, like they might only want one ingress, egress.
Well, I think, I think I have them two already plotted when I come to the town a couple of years ago, asking to put that road on the town property.
Yes.
We utilized that, we bought that and used that and then it would be
Yeah.
off of there would be the next, which would be the police side.
Yeah. And I think we talked about that then, and I think, I think even then Mike was okay with, you know, he thought that would be doable with the county.
Yeah, so we just make sure, make sure we plot that in the right spot so it don't have to be changed.
Right.
The construction of fire and some police department.
Brian, can Brian, can you put it on your agenda to ask the rec about moving the ponies?
What do you want to do? Move the baseball field?
Yeah, to see if they're able to reschedule it.
Yeah, because that's only for T-ball. So I'll see what they can do.
Frank, remember about a year ago, we talked about even moving the basketball court further back into the back left-hand corner of that park? Joe, if that was to happen, is there enough of a, an entranceway on the north side of the building to turn half of that basketball court into a, a parking spot for, let's say, ten vehicles? You know, and then the rest of it be you utilize the rest of that area for town supplies and such?
Oh, probably. We could, it'd be small, but that, that would be fine. It'd be on a hard surface and stuff.
Right, well, that's what I was thinking. Is there enough room on the back right-hand corner of that building to drive a car back in there?
Um, I would use the left side right here as when you come in and go straight in. We'd put a, I'd put a lane right in there.
I think we're gonna, we're going into the planning stage. Let's just talk to the money part now.
We're trying to figure out whether or not we want to do it. So I think. And once again, now you're talking blacktop where the basketball court is or whatever gravel, and then you're talking more blacktop back in the park. You're almost taking that whole side of the park away from everybody. And I think that would be a shame. It's a pretty park. To have it look like that, I, I just, I don't think, I wouldn't want to do it myself.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay, uh, that's, that's pretty much the outline of the road O and A. Like I said, a, a lion's share of my budget is always rock salt in winter time. We've been pretty fortunate the last couple of years. I can't predict the future and the weatherman can't even predict Sunday and Monday yet because they don't know. So, but right now, right now, I'm only at about twenty-four thousand dollars in salt or a little under twenty, somewhere in that area. But I always try to, I get quote estimate for about a thousand ton four or five years ago, a normal winter like we used to have, we were anywhere from eight hundred to almost a thousand ton of rock salt use out on the thing. And that's where some of the savings came in my O and A. Last year, we didn't use everything that was allotted, but that's, that's like an insurance policy. You don't wanna, don't wanna back down off of it and then end up being in hot court.
Right.
So. Um, that, that's pretty much unless anybody else has any questions on the O and A of the DPW.
Nope, I'm good with that. Anybody else?
I'm good with that.
All right, then I guess maybe go into the DPW capital expenditures, which I think if everybody has the sheet. I know it's a, it's a big number, comes down to being a wish list, but I do know speaking with Paul, it sounds like he's wanted me to investigate looking into loosely pickup. So I'll go, I'll go with that because some of them numbers a little bit. So like there was two options, looked into a leaf back sucker. This is not the pipe that hold contains the leaves itself. It blows it into the truck. So I figured I'd be able to utilize trucks more running back and forth. The process wouldn't slow down. But with that in the boxes, we're at eighty-one thousand dollars to purchase this equipment used for about two months of the year. Uh, second option was they make a, and our loader is capable of doing it because we have what I called it debris grapple on it. They make a grapple claw bucket with a mesh which is used for leak cleanup. We take the machine down and it clamshells instead of this way, like this. And then we just pick it up and dump it over the trucks. So there's no box needed for the trucks and it's, right now, that's twenty twenties price. They expect almost because the steel and stuff going up about a ten percent increase with, with this. So you're looking at probably another two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, it's an attachment to the loader. We put it on when leaf season comes and detach it once, uh, once we're done. And then the final cleanup, since we do own a street sweeper, we would go along and sweep the streets up behind it to get the rest of the loose stuff. Might be a little bit slower than the bags, but probably we'll get more, we'll get, I expect we're probably gonna increase the pickup and the accumulation probably maybe by twenty-five, thirty percent. The only other issue I have with that, then I found out deal with others, the county and the state does not allow loose leaves being blown into their streets, into their road right of ways. So those people would still have to bag those leaves.
That's why.
Not allow that.
I actually don't think it's allowed anywhere because of the stormwater management regulations. Even in Bloomsbury, they have to keep it between the curb and the sidewalk, which is almost impossible.
The only way that we're gonna be able to pick these up is in the street. I can't run the machine down the, what's called the municipal roads. If we're cleaning them up and active on it, we can, we can handle that. I know they can't be there for a long time. And the other, the other plus thing with using the bucket, when they get a little wet, we get a little freezing, we still pick it up. The sucker back machine, very tough job to do that with when they get wet, little bit frozen, clumped up. And I talked to Brian Weeks, then Low Pat Con, they got a new loader last year and they got this bucket. They had a sucker trailer machine that contained it in the trailer. He said this year, still took them same amount of time, but it was less manpower. It freed up one man during the process to do other things by picking them up with the loader and dumping it in the truck and hauling the trucks. And the process moved along better with the one-way sucker machine they had. They get it full, they had a fifteen-minute to twenty-minute turnaround, go in to dump the leaves and wait for the truck and trailer to come back to the site and continue. So that was, that was the things I looked at when I gave these two options and pricing it out under capital for the leaps, for leaves. Top, the top of the list here is the new, new big dump truck or replacement for the dump truck with the roll-off type truck. This price is, continues to go up because of steel, diesel exhaust, the emission requirements, so forth and so on. So right now, I, I had about one eighty, one ninety last year on some of the numbers I'm seeing now. We're gonna be pushing two twenty. But the roll-off truck gives me the options of having a couple small containers like dumpsters. Since we are, I know we talked about the yard, but when we need to get rid of this stuff, I could even put the dumpsters in the yard, like the lawn debris and stuff if we can't compost it and we're still composting away at river's edge, the hole, if they can wait there a few weeks, get full, also puts a. The hole, if they can wait there a few weeks, get full, also puts a, I can, what it does gives me a truck and chassis. With many other options, put a chipper box on it for when we're out chipping along the roads or chipping debris. Uh, to town, or maybe we even start a chipping program through the summer and go around sections once a week. And, and do that kind of stuff. Um, salt, the salt spreader, you dump the body off, you put the salt spreader on. It's uh, we won't have to use it, I, I plan on using this truck where all the wires are in the old section at town. So we don't have to dump the load of salt back to the tailgate to spread it. It has a auger in the, in the body, it stays flat, no lifting. They can still have a snow plow on this truck, so it's gonna have all the functions of a dump truck, but. The options of changing the bodies and having the bodies here to do other functions. Multi-function truck. Right now, our dump trucks, yeah, we put leaves and stuff in, but it only dumps the dump saw. We could even get a flatbed tre- uh, setup for this and use it like a rollback. Put equipment dog, uh, winch it on if it breaks down out in the road, save tow bills, so forth, so on.
Joe, with that, when you said a chipper?
Yes.
Would you, is that something where you would put it to the curb and you could go around and do chippings for people's trees and?
Yeah, uh, well, I would, I would say do like a brush thing, I, I, I would. I know most of the other towns do a chipping program, but they limit it to like trimmings and stuff, if you have a contractor coming in doing a tree. Uh, they don't do that, because we could be there all day chipping up their debris, so I, I would limit it to, like I said, if you're trimming. Trimming around your yard up to maybe four or five inch branches. But we could come, instead of doing the drop off every other Saturday or the first of the third Saturday. Maybe we could pick a section at town and this week on a Wednesday, we come around and chip that area. The following week, another section, and try to get to the whole town one day a week throughout a month. And do a chipping program.
And would that allow the county roads to do that?
Yes, because it's in your yard, we would just pull up, they don't want the debris and stuff like that in the road. Where for us to pick up the leaves and our machines, they have to be out in the road for the leaves. That's a different situation, just at the edge of the road in your yard. That could be.
Okay.
Have to be for all streets.
Thank you.
Joan, I'm assuming that's to replace the nineteen ninety-five international dump truck?
Yes, the one that the last snow, we towed to Updikes International and had a fuel problem, I was fortunate enough, I bought the injection pump. Went bad and here it was the fuel supply pump. Which we just got back yesterday morning in time for this storm. The last three times we've had something break down on this truck, this.
Were we, were we taking that out of service when we get this one?
Yes, absolutely, I'd take it right up to the county sale, so it disappears.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, and the next thing is a, another pickup truck, the, the one, uh. The oldest pickup truck is a two thousand eight, and I did, I did forward a. Equipment list and a, what I call, and that, that is a scheduled replacement, that is just from. What I, over the years, working for the DPW, see how long this equipment seems to last. And that was, like I said, we had two and three guys then, now we're up to four full-time guys and a yearly part-timer. We're starting to put more miles, more usage on these things, so it might even be on the shorter end, I might be a little bit long, but. I put together, uh, like I said, uh, proposed replacement and the year of replacement. In there, and the pickup truck is where I'm at. I'm at the point that with this truck is, we run it till the wheels fall off of it, but. Get something here, so I don't miss it when the wheels fall off of the vehicle.
Yeah. So the light span on, light span on the other truck is probably like a twenty-year light span, we're looking at the first truck we talked about.
Twenty to twenty-five.
Yeah, and then on this, on this, on the, on the pickup, what do you figure, ten to fifteen?
I got between ten and fifteen, it's on my schedule there. Like I said, it should be in the back of a, of a packet there, I did send the equipment list and the replacement.
Yep.
Yeah, and matter of fact, I think it was, if it's still in color, I have them highlighted, that was so. It says at the top, DPW fleet equipment replacement schedule. And I give you the recommended years of replacement by weight to the truck. It looks like this.
Yep, I have it, I'm looking at it.
Like I said, that was just from me working with the DPW all these years and stuff, I got pickup trucks seven to ten. Might even be twelve years, the heavy equipment and stuff, there's twenty to thirty, because like I said, some. Just don't use it daily, like we do other things.
Yeah. Well, we are catching up somewhat in this equipment, I've got at least some of the schedules all the way up into the twenty forties.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, we are, we are catching up. Uh, and, and the stuff that we have that we've been replacing also was not replacement stuff. It was the influx of the growth of our town addition. That was getting us up to handle what we were getting.
Yeah.
It don't seem like that long ago, but nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five, our population was barely two thousand. Then, old brothers agreeing with Chase come in, and seven, eight, ten years later, were. Uh, I seen the population thing, or the two thousand census, our community grew a hundred and twenty-eight percent population. Fast, one of the fastest growing communities, so. That added them roads and stuff, so now we're, now we're into the replacement phase of the equipment that we have. And then whatever happens with this building thing in the two thousand twenty-five, not Laurel thing. I'm hoping I'm retired by then before we gotta add more equipment, and that's somebody else's problem.
Yeah.
Um, so that, there's that, and with the pickup truck, and also the pickup truck is looking to go a little different. Uh, instead of just the standard cab and stuff, it'd be a crew cab, because there's three, four of us and. When we don't need to be in three different trucks going somewhere and stuff and that, and plus of course it's snowplow. None of the pickup trucks, uh, pickup truck, rack truck in one mason dump does not spread salt. Only we have one mason dump that has a salt route with a spreader and a snowplow. So these here are just plow trucks when it comes down to winter time. Um, okay, we did the leaves, mowing equipment, we discussed, uh, we talked briefly because of, uh, at the town meeting. The tap DPW taking over some of the mowing, and as I stated, we needed to, uh. It's not the manpower, it's the acres per hour I can cut. In our work schedule, within our eight-hour work schedule. We're not landscapers, we don't, we don't mow, or we're not working from sunup to sundown. Then with, after eight hours or from between seven and three, and in the summertime, six and two. We pay overtime. So, and with a budget and a fixed budget that way, and not collecting the fee for the, doing that. So I need a, another tractor, a, a big tractor, the town when we were mowing. Prior to two thousand fifteen, as a matter of fact, Frank, I think you're on the committee in early two thousand with the open space, you and Greg Blaska. Uh. Bought the McCormick tractor with the bat wing mower on the back. Remember that?
I don't. Uh, I was on in two thousand and three, Joe.
Yeah, so somewhere right in there, we bought this tractor because we were. When the farm detention areas got all turned over.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Remember that? So this tractor I'm proposing is the same setup. Because that tractor, I got rid of the mower and I put my roadside mower on the tractor, we still have that tractor. But that does the roadside, so this new tractor, a little bit more is, has an enclosed cab. And it'll have the big mower on the back, which that mower could mow between sixteen. And nineteen acres an hour. So that brings our acre per hour down, that gives the guys time to do other things. Right now, with the two, with the two six-foot mowers, the two Coros I got. I think I'm only at, and I gotta take into effect moving from space to space and. Uh, hills and all the obstacles, I'm thinking they're able to do about four acres an hour each. So we're. Changing our, uh, how many acres per hour and give them time to do other things. Like I stated before, what I want to do is, when we get into the mowing, one full-time guy, and I'll have a seasonal. Uh, summertime seasonal part-time guy, and my yearly part-time guy will. Fill that other seat of that mower and do the mowing, weed whacking, parks and playgrounds. They're gonna be doing parks and playgrounds, take care of the baseball fields, lining the baseball fields, doing the park garbages, weed whacking, trimming. They're gonna maintain the base, all, all the fields. Spring from April one to the end of November.
All right, so Joe, real quick then, because this now applies to the piece of paper we all got about the lawn mowing. So we can't even contemplate taking over the school mowing. Because this machine, if we approve it, we're not gonna have it till mid-year regardless.
Correct, that's what I figured, I could take care of all the town properties as we stand, machine-wise now. The schools would be a tough nut to take care of. Uh, we would really be pushing it. Like you know, one or two days of rain.
Yeah, right, right.
So if we could contract out, bid out the schools for a year. And then take it all over, once we get this machine this year and have it here. And the guys can cut their teeth on it, because we get this machine midway. That ain't meaning it's gonna sit till we get to mow the schools next year, I'll use it. And that'll cut their time down now, but we're not ready for April, mid-April, beginning April to take over everything.
Right, but by taking over the town uh, areas excluding the schools. Contractually speaking, we're going to save forty-five thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
Actually, that's. We have a cost. Um, so forty-five, we're gonna save forty-five contracting-wise, but then it's gonna cost. You some, and if I'm looking at the numbers right. Uh, forty-five, so it's probably around eighteen thousand, so you're, you're gonna end up being like twenty-two, twenty-three thousand. To the good.
Yes, yeah, it could be used towards the machines in the next couple of years, and then after that, it, besides maintenance and some of that. What I put a figure there was, was actually just the labor, so. Maintenance-wise, one issue, there, you know, a couple thousand more a year, that's. You know, right now, they're new, fairly new machines, so we're not having major issues, it's just blades. Occasional flat tire service, stuff like that.
So four years from now, and actually, it would actually end up speeding up after the following year. We're gonna pay for this machine by not paying uh, for-profit contractors in, in, in three years or less.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
So as much as it's an expenditure, it actually is a, a cost savings in the long term, so, okay.
And I, and there, with it being capital and stuff, uh, it could be possibly something. That could come out of the open space fund, since I know, uh, the parks and stuff like that are. Are more or less, I think last year, you guys agreed that with the money that's coming in from the farm leases and stuff. Help pay for maintenance and that there, open space could probably pay for this, because that's gonna be what it's modeled. There's open spaces and parks and playgrounds, is the big goal.
That's a good point, that's a super good point.
Put something on their open space, right, so.
Okay.
And then, then the last thing I have on my list there, it's a. Paul, you're probably familiar with it, they called a Harley rake a power rake, I rented one last spring. To do the landscaping around the new Thomas Stork Park Pavilion. We did that, the DPW did that landscape, we put the drainage pipes in off the downspouts. And we took the dirt, that wasn't the contractor, put all the dirt back, we had a mound as tall as that building there. DPW took care of that landscape thick and this, and I'm happy to say, we had that tropical storm. And no water runoff ran through to cross that pavilion, only what blew in that fell out of the scum. So it had a good test with the tropical storm just this past uh, summer. That we didn't have a lake in underneath that roof. Um, this, this hard, power rake would help me landscape, uh. We got bad areas out there now without topsoil, help maintain the baseball fields, I can set it to where it just. Chews up the top of the infield to take away that winter compaction. Also, summertime when it's real dry, I can use it as a baseball field maintainer. They can use it to maintain the stone parking lots, I have a lot of use for something like this, and it saves a lot of time and labor. And we have the tractors to do it, I have the one John Deere here now that I expect that to operate it. And that new tractor, if we go that way, we can just unhook the mower, which is just a trailer drawn mower. And use it on the back of that machine, so don't need the, don't need the motor to operate it, I could use the attachment. And once again, that's something that'll be used a lot in open space, and even, even some of the DPW jobs, so we could split that up maybe. Because when we put a pipe in through a yard or through a grassy area, it'll help us get the dirt leveled off, raked off quicker. Seated and, and go.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Hey Joe, real quick to go back to, sorry, to go back to the park, um, old park. I just got direct apartments, fine with, maybe, we can maybe move that T-ball field to the new park. Maybe look into, uh, maybe like a portable, uh, backstop. I know that they're, they're not that expensive, the, the portable ones are like five hundred dollars that fold up and collapse. Um, so yeah, that, they would be fine with that.
Yeah, I think, I think we got room if we go in and go off to the left of the flagpole, that stone parking lot in there. The, the grass is really coming in quick, uh, nice, you'll move it there, we won't get it down to the. Playing surface of the field number three, but in between there where we're putting some of the little kicker soccer fields.
Yeah.
You could even.
That's a pretty nice area down in there, and it's far enough away from the walking path and, and the parking lot. That it's not, it won't inhibit walkers and the other passive.
Yeah, and like you said, with the parking issue, um, T-ball, that they're obviously gonna have more fans or younger kids, so usually you got grandparents. But you know, you got a lot of family.
And they'll utilize that left parking lot, both stone lots would be perfect.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, even got to the right side of the playground, that whole area too, if you wanted to put a T-ball field there.
Yeah, I mean, you don't need that much room.
You don't need a lot of room, there's plenty of, there's plenty of areas in the park to move it. We'll have to put it on the OS agenda.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Hey Joe, one more quick question before you move to different things, though. Uh, in capital expenditures over the last two, if not three years. We've dedicated at least fifty-five thousand dollars each year. Towards purchases for the road, because that's how we saved up for the backhoe we needed two years. And so have, has, has, what's the number that we've been spending for the DPW? On capital expenditures, a- and if not spending, is saving it from year to year, is it fifty-five, was it sixty, sixty-five?
Uh, I'm gonna go back to two thousand nineteen, I think we put fifty thousand aside. Two thousand twenty, we had an increase in the backhoe, I think it ended up being fifty-five or fifty-six thousand. Last year, because the backhoe come in at a hundred and, it was a hundred and three. It come in at a hundred and eight or a hundred and ten, something like that.
Right.
Um, so yes, that, that's been in there, two thousand, two thousand nineteen. Um, I don't, except for some small equipment, I don't think we had a large purchase. And I, I say a large as a large piece of, uh, equipment or like a truck.
No, right, because we were saving money for the backup.
Yeah, yeah, we saved two years for the back.
Five and fifty-five, to tell you the truth, I thought that's what we did that.
I thought so, right? Where are you going now, buildings and grounds?
Uh, that, or, uh, I don't know, you wanna start, you wanna do salaries later? We go to buildings and grounds, we can get that stuff out of the way. Okay, buildings and grounds wise, uh, some of this stuff is improvements and. I seen the CFO's, uh, printouts and stuff with maintenance and just the janitorial supplies and stuff like that. Uh, I didn't get really a lot of time to go through that. Uh, word for word and stuff, but some of the maintenance stuff around the building and stuff I have here. And I wanna jump right to the municipal building septic system right away. We need to do some, we're at the point. We just had this septic air pump beginning of January. I had the guys check it just this week. It is eight inches from the lid, and that has a twenty-four inch or twenty-four inch tall riser. The system is, no water is evacuating out of that at all. December, I had an emergency pumping. January, I had it pumped, and it's due to be pumped now. Right now, we're only on a quarterly pumping at two hundred dollars a quarter. We're gonna be, if this continues, it's gonna have to be done monthly. Yeah, instead of, maybe we look into redoing the laterals. Keep the tank, because I don't think, I don't think it needs a whole new system. We just gotta do a perk test out here. I was talking to the septic guys, and I don't know what the rules are. Once again, maybe a question for Mike. But maybe. Put in the, and I, DPW could do it, be a little inconvenient for the police, for the mo, for the little time being where we do it. But put a new lateral pipe in there, and the septic guy said they make what's called a leach tank. So it'd be another tank that holds in, that collects the water and drains out, drains out the field. But we have to have a perk test done out here to see if the soils can perk to absorb. That water.
How, how, how old is that leach field, Joe?
Uh, it runs, well, where the police cars, short story, where the police cars are parked. When this municipal building was built, that was only the driveway coming out. That was only an eight or ten foot blacktop path, that was all grass. That's where the septic tank and the leach field, and the leach field runs along that property line. There's a collector box. Which, I gotta say, twelve to fifteen years ago. It got, it collapsed, the lid broke all off of it, but no maintenance of the septic system got full of solids. We even had to try to get rotor rooted, and it didn't work. So it's all clogged with solids, so it. I'm saying the leach field's probably good, or the perk out there will probably be good, because it's not getting no water. It hasn't for years. We've been pumping this, we've been pumping this septic air quarterly for. Ten years, because that isn't collecting any water, so it's gotta, it's gotta be dry.
So you're, you're thinking that the tank's still good, the distribution box probably needs to be replaced, and then just new pipes in the la, for laterals?
Or we look into one of these, uh, leach tanks where it goes, fills that up, and then it leaks out the holes in the sides of the tank. You know, but we have to dig up a hole and do a perk test. And I think that, that's gonna be the process, and I, I, I know. Mike will be the guy to answer that question.
Look, but Joe, I got a question. They can't allow you not to use a septic, right? So I don't understand the perk test part of it, because we're already. Like, what if, what if the perk test comes back wrong, they're gonna say, what, we can't put a septic in?
Like I said, that's question for Mike. I don't, I don't know.
We already have a septic there, is what I'm saying, right? I mean, it doesn't make sense to me that that would be a condition, because we already. We already have the septic tank there. It's gotta be either a leach field or a tank, right? So I don't, I'm wondering about that. Not that, you know.
Well, like I said, that's, that's a question for Mike. That's, that's out. I can do the work, because it's not that difficult. I don't have the technical question.
Thinking about it, though, I'm like, I don't see how they could deny it.
Uh, unless, unless that field there is all full solids and we have to remove that and get rid of it.
Maybe, maybe some remediation on the, on the leach field part of it. I mean, thinking of how they would deny that.
Well, Frank, they don't, they don't deny it, but there are several types of systems that they could require you to put in then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and that's where things get really crazy, where you see somebody's whole backyard becomes a sand mound. Because it couldn't perk right, and so you had to build a septic system above ground versus below ground. Uh, yeah, they, they can't deny you a system, it's what system they'll approve.
Right, okay. But it sounds to me, Joe, as if maybe we wouldn't get stuck having to dig out all the old stone and freshen the stone up, because that's probably all clogged with solids and grease is. What it sounds like, right?
Yes, yeah, and the pipes, replace the pipes. And like I said, I, that would save us from building a whole new one, which would almost have to go up in the back up there and have to pump it to it and stuff. I think if we just fix this leach field, tear, it's gonna tear up the, we gotta rip up the blacktop. Dig it out, do whatever we need to do. We have the trucks, we have the equipment. It won't be a thirty-five thousand dollar fifty. I got in there that, that's if a contractor did that.
Right.
If we do it, it's material. Stone. Clean fill, you know.
Joe, Paul, do you and Joe, we wanna meet with Mike and see if we can start getting some numbers, so we know what we're walk, working with and talking about?
We can meet with Mike, but I think the people that we need to meet with first is the county. Because they're the ones that approve all that, and they will actually tell us what they will or won't. Wouldn't you agree to that, Joe?
Yeah, we go to board of health, and like I said, I think, I think we, instead of saying we're replacing or this and that.
We're repairing.
Repairing our, our leach field.
So we can start getting some numbers.
All right, okay.
I'm around one night, if you wanna do it, something, let me know, I'll, I'll go with you or talk with you.
Okay.
Okay. That's gotta be a priority.
Okay, um. Couple other things that we're hanging now, uh, I will just, we'll go back there to top. I know the ladies' room thing there, that's, that's a quick fix, I just. I don't have enough ti, uh, days in the, in the week or hours in the day sometimes to do some of this stuff. Hopefully with the extra hours I got with the full-time guy, we can get some more things done. I was, I had on the list last year, and I knew there was a, another account that has about, has twenty-six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. To replace the two-man doors, the entrance doors in the firehouse, and the DPW, all rotted, the frames. The doors sometimes don't shut, or when they're shut, they're rusted or they're swollen, and you gotta. Sometime put your foot on the door, on the wall and pull the doors open, but the replacement doors have gone up. They're about thirty-six hundred dollars a piece, especially with the new, uh. We got the fobs, it's called a magnetic lock and stuff like that. So taking that twenty-six seventy-seven that we have in that old account, I need another forty-five hundred dollars to just purchase. The doors, and then the DPW, we can work on replacing them one at a time. And then this, this here is an old one, the replacement of the roof on the, on the municipal building. I know we've been tossing back and forth, and then the solar thing. And everything else, um. It's just something to keep in mind, we can, that further down the list here I got was, maybe it's getting close to time to. Re-seal and repaint the roof with the, with the, um, paint seal or that. That would be an outside contractor, probably in the area sixty-five hundred to seven thousand dollars material and labor. I talked to Paul about this, with growing of the guys in DPW and stuff, is to. Put a lunchroom attached off of my office where I'm at right now for this meeting. For, for the guys, right now, but they, they're in here, lunchroom and this and that. Uh, when I need to have a conversation with Paul and private and stuff, I don't, don't have that privacy here in the office, and I also explained to Paul, he says. I know we got all the records here, and I seen what's there, that I'd like to start getting some copies. I have nothing in the DPW office. Of our drainage easements through all of the developments. Uh, where, where we got the right-of-ways and stuff like that, is start taking the land use. Maps that there and copy those. Right now, I have to contact Mike. Mike makes a small, he'll take the area that I'm talking about, and he'll make a copy of it, and only give me that instead of the whole sheet. What I've learned is DPW, uh, uh, offices and. Uh, supervisors have all that stuff at their finger touch. And able to get the crews out there and do that, do that without contacting the engineer. And getting him to go out to plot the location or take a map and put a circle around it. I know where it's at, I just need to know where the easement. What our easements are. I know how to use a tape measure and measure and, and go about that. So if I have them maps here, and my office set up and more and more paperwork and stuff I'm getting, and including. Uh, last year, on the, and this was brought up to the committee, the designated employee. Representative, employer representative for the CDL. Testing, the drug testing and stuff. This is a whole new thing. All the CDL drivers. Are gotta be into this, it's called a clearinghouse. It's a federal, federal, uh, database. Through the federal, uh, Motor Association. For drug testing, because in the past, somebody failed a drug test, they got fired. The next day, they go and get a job with somebody else, because there was no chart of records. So there's another thing that stays in, in this office with me. This here, and every year I got to do a, do a, uh, check on all of our CDL drivers and print a report. So more, more paperwork, more things like that, uh, just being involved through this department. So what our estimates, once again, DPW doing, uh, doing about five thousand dollars materials. Uh, probably about half of that or two thousand dollars would be having electrician come in and do the electric work.
Now, Joe, will that lunchroom be able to stay there, or even in a couple of years, if we end up moving the firehouse out and the police out, and you're gonna put a shower and everything back there for the guys? That won't interfere with that?
I, I would like to. This, this garage building here is what I'm gonna call is be our repair shop. So if anything broke down, we come in and out of here, but like I said, their lunchroom will be here. We already have a bathroom. Could like to expand that into a bathroom and a locker room, but it'll, it'll still be the main tools and the parts room.
Now, what I'm asking is, is we build this lunchroom, we're not gonna rip it out in three years to reconfigure. We're gonna do it so that it can be. Integrated right into the new, new plan, right?
Correct, yes, it's, I'm not planning on going anywhere with it, because when I had the new. Heating unit, heating and air conditioning unit put in.
That me or him? Oh, there you go.
I had, I had a second head already put out there on the wall to be the heat and air conditioning in this room.
Okay, now that's all my only question is, I don't wanna put in in three years or put out saying we're gonna do something else.
No, no, and plus, I wanna build it a little bit stronger. I'm gonna build, I'm gonna build a, like a. A floor on top of the roof for storage, because we're wasting a lot of overhead space here. We got a tall overhead. We could do like a mezzanine and have other storage above here. Lot of airspace being wasted.
Okay.
So. That's pretty much of the big improvements. I went down just real quick, and I know some of the other line items, like parks and playgrounds, there's, uh. Some money left over there, but that was because we didn't utilize porta-johns. During the COVID and all the playing fields, where we're up to thirteen, you know, porta-johns. Last year, last spring, no sports. And barely got a fall sport season in, and we only added a couple porta-johns at the end, so. Some of these numbers are gonna look like we did a, a big savings. We gotta remember the COVID issue. And what, what we didn't do through two thousand and twenty.
Hey, Joe, how close are the folks with the. Uh, the, the plans for the municipal complex?
Okay, I have, I have, uh, and I didn't get an email out, uh, after, afterwards I'll email it out. So I did get an estimate. On, um. Square footage and price per square foot. And what, what we have, the fire station, okay, if you remember initially with the backhoe hole and everything. It was gonna be fourteen thousand five hundred, eight hundred square foot fire station. So now the fire station is down to nine thousand square feet. The price per square foot, depending on, uh. How, what we finish with is between a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. Making the fire station part one point one to one point three million dollars. The police department section is forty-nine hundred square feet. The fit, the cost per square foot is between two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. Coming out to one, between one and one point two million dollars. This does not include site work. This is just building. HVAC, water, you know, the whole thing. And there are the prices from them, the other thing that, that the fire department's able to get a construction loan. Prevailing wage in the state of New Jersey is thirty percent. The fire department doesn't have to do that, we're a nonprofit. So them prices, prevailing wage from, on the municipal side on government is thirty percent more. So roughly, even if it's two million or two point five, add, add, uh, thirty percent more.
Well, I was hoping you were gonna tell me that was thirty percent less. I mean, I know it's more, but I thought the, I was hoping these numbers were prevailing wage.
Oh, yeah, uh, that, I don't know. That's what they given me square footage wise.
So you don't know if they figured in prevailing wage or not?
No, but thi, this is what I've, what I've heard, this is the going rate. You know, prevailing wage is added, added to it when it comes to the labor cost and stuff.
Got it. Yeah, that's, that's a lot, boy, that's a million more than I was thinking, but that's okay.
And once again, I, it's, it ain't getting any cheaper. It's, it's nowhere near getting any cheaper. You know, I, I talked to the Conestoga guys, or not Conestoga, but Dutchman. They do the outside building, the shell, but they don't do the finishing. So there's, then that's, and that's where you get, that's where you get into the price and what happens there, that's the costly, the finishing. Doing the inside work.
Yeah.
And, uh, like I said, the fire department will have to go out and, uh, see if we can get a con, construction loan. Now, I'll tell you right now, with the site work and stuff, what we've done, we've, we've invested sixty thousand dollars in that site. We have perk, we have our geo work done. Between the lawyers and everything else, I know we have to finish up getting the deed taken care of. I think Mike, uh. Or the town attorney is still doing that, so we don't have that done. And then the site, site work, the site work might come down a little bit, because we're not having as much parking. Police department doesn't need, uh, sixty, seventy, eighty parking. Police department doesn't need sixty, seventy, eighty parking spots like a banquet hall would. So less impervious surface, less required for the stormwater regulations. But we still have to build a detention area for stormwater. It's, it's above, it's above all of us. It's that state. We gotta do that and then we have to have an area for it to drain off on. So there's some things there and now, and I do know, and I'll share with you is, is the fire department does have over, let me, I'll give you the exact price, what we have saved right now and allotted for the fire station. So if we need a percentage down. Our one, our one account and we have a, a Morgan Stanley account, which the firefighters, when they sold the old fire station back in the seventies, started at twenty-five thousand dollars is now a hundred and four thousand and hundred and fifty-one. And in our building fund checking account, we have a hundred and three thousand, two hundred and eighty-six. So we're at about, I would say, two hundred and seven thousand dollars right now. So whatever percentage we would need down to get a construction zone, I'm hoping that we're close. If it's ten percent, I'm thinking that's, that's two hundred thousand dollars is two million at ten percent.
Okay, I guess you're at salaries now?
Uh, yeah, or we could go over, Paul, do you wanna talk about road overlay program?
Uh, yeah, we can start that now. Sure.
Sure. So I did, I worked on this late. I sent out an email to everybody. I don't know if everybody got it. So I had a, what I call a straight straight paving worksheet. So I did some adjustments on it. Mike Finelli back in two thousand fourteen did a did a big packet for the committee back then of all, all the straits. The square footage, the miles of straits, and he created a list of all the straits and then he created a list of from bad or from more bad to good straits and overlay program or repair program, so forth, so on. So and then he gave a brief thing, gave a timeframe, and I think that was to, to this committee or back in late two thousand fifteen, early two thousand sixteen of what to do each year to get us caught up. We're at the area of about for two thousand twenty that he had on his list was Willover Way, Bradford Lane, Alden, and then there's two branch roads off of Alden, Greensfield and Mayflower. But in the, on his list that he developed in the order of worst to better to be replaced, then if you printed that out that I said, Willover Way is eighth on the list now, and this is eliminating what we've paid. So they're, they're down at the bottom now, all the roads that were paved. So on the list, eighth is Willover Way, ninth is Bradford, sixteenth is Alden, twenty-seventh for Greenfields and fifty-one on Mayflower. Then I put on the list down below the heights and looking at that area and the cost that it would be. Beacon Street is on the sixth on the list. Edison is tenth, Holcizer is third, Palmer is seventh, Prospect is the fourteenth on the list, Thompson is thirty-fifth, Warren Street is thirteenth. One, one good thing, the Morris County co-op price dropped by seven dollars and forty cents, two thousand twenty, the put down blacktop was seventy-four dollars and forty cents a ton. This year, new bidder, new, uh, new outfit got the bid, sixty-seven dollars a ton. So there's a savings there. Also in the milling, anywhere from zero to four inches, two thousand twenty, it was three dollars and five cents a square yard. This year it's two dollars and seventy cents a square yard. The only factor that's not known is what they call in the blacktop, the escalation, and that's the oil. That goes up and down like the stock market. And I, I think they got it on a monthly basis, what the escalation on the oil is.
It's gonna change.
So in the sections, if we go.
That's going up.
Yep. That, yeah. And same way with what our gas is gonna cost us.
Yeah, exactly.
So if we go with Mike's to get to his two thousand twenty list, then five roads that I said this year would be about four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. If we just did the heights areas, that would be, and that's the heights, Paul knows that, that's, that's us original people, but the other roads that I talked about would be two hundred and fourteen thousand. So I don't know where the town, what the township plans are. We gotta just put a little bit into the road paving. But also then I just took Mike's list down at the bottom of that sheet and put together the total number of tons of blacktop to finish the roads that we need to do and the square yards of milling of all the existing roads that need to be paved. Paving would be three million, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred. Milling and down, anywhere between zero and four would be nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred dollars for a grand total of four thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars.
It's actually four million, but anyway.
Oh, yeah. Four million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
And I asked Joe to come up with this number and because there's a couple of startling points here. Back in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, when they originally had Mike do this in TCs at the time, every road that needed to be paved in Greenwich Township could have been done for one point five, one point six million, right, Joe?
Yeah, that or shade under two. It was.
Well, exactly. And look, it's six years later. We're at, at four and a half million dollars. If we're only, and I'm gonna say nitpicking these stuff away, another six years, we're still gonna be four and a half million dollars. I, and, and John Mooney will have it ready. I do have a principal copy right now. I asked him what it would cost to bond, not only the balance of the road so that every township committee for the next fifteen years doesn't have to worry about it. I also asked him to include in the bond what the fire, the municipal complex would cost PD and a firehouse. So he's got some preliminary numbers here for me. I'm not thinking it's horrible or anything else like that, but it, it basically I've been talking about trying to, to, to save for the, not for the rainy day, but to implement a roads program and stuff like that so that we can get it done. It kinda takes it out of the picture. I'll be the first to tell you, it's substantial. But when you look at the actual impact per resident on a yearly basis, to come up with all of that, it's really not horrible. But I'll let John Mooney talk to about that. I really think we should give some consideration to committing to paving it because we're throwing millions away by not doing it now. We've already thrown millions away because we didn't do it six years ago. At some point, we need to, to think fiscally about, all right, it's a big bullet, but it's a bigger bullet down the road. So again, I'm throwing that out right now. I'll have John Mooney send you everything as soon as he gets it compiled. Cause these rough numbers don't include the increase in the firehouse and stuff like that. But I think you all, we, we need to think about it. But there's no hiding a, a substantial tax increase to, to do that. But I think if everybody saw every road in the community being done and a new municipal complex, I don't know that there'd be a lot of pushback. But that's my opinion. I'm throwing that out there right now. I'll have, John Mooney said he'd have all the figures for us next Saturday.
Yeah, the only issue with all of this is, and we're gonna have to decide this, what the final budget numbers is.
No, I hear you there. I.
It's just the worst, you know, there are people that are struggling out there right now. And to talk about large increases right now, it just.
The economy's on.
I think a lot of people, a lot of towns are going flat budget right now and they're seeing where everything's gonna settle, you know? And right now we're still in the middle of a crisis and people are losing their jobs everywhere now. And I just think we gotta keep that in consideration. I know we wanna do all these things and, and I agree, a lot of this has to be, has to be done. I just think these are, these are different times right now and we may, and I hate doing this, but we may have to put things off until we know what, what the whole COVID situation, what the whole economy is gonna look like, because this ain't ending anytime soon. That's just something I think we gotta, we gotta look at.
And I somewhat agree with you, but on the other hand, I, I see people who are leaving the community, not because of COVID or anything, it was just their time to leave and bidding wars taking place on, on homes and properties that people thought were worth four hundred and forty thousand and they're going for five hundred and five and so on and so forth.
Yeah, but that, that's a bubble. That, that's a bubble. That's a bubble because the cities, people are leaving the cities because of all the turmoil. So.
I got that, but I also know over the last couple of years, because the warehousing has been a big issue and not that this, I'm tying this into, there are lots of folks, particularly on the southern end of town that, that felt that they'd be willing to pay more, you know, and stuff like that. So I, I think there's, there's money out there and the town is being penalized because unfortunately the community's net value, I don't know how they do it, Joe and I have talked about it, like this firehouse. If, if our net median income wasn't so high, it would be built by, what was the source, Joe?
Uh, USDA.
Yeah, the USDA, but because the median income in this town, so there's no, there's no getting away with a firehouse on somebody else's, or let's just say a nationwide tax surplus, it's coming straight from us. You know, so there, there's some things that are down there. And yeah, I'll be the first one to tell you it's tight. And I don't know if John can lay out a, a plan over a period of time. But again, I just don't know that we can continually not do what we need to do.
It's just the, it's just the timing. It's just, you're talking right now to do it, you're doing it at the worst time, like with COVID and everything. It's like, if we would have addressed it two years ago or, you know, and now also, now we're gonna address it. After all this time, now we're gonna fix everything and we're gonna fix it during one of the worst economic crises we've had in a long time. So I just think it's something, I mean, we'll look at it. And we'll see, but we just gotta keep that in mind.
No, I, I met with a bunch of the governing bodies in Warren County this week and all of them have flat budgets. Jorge Chazla and Kern both said they're advising a flat budget as well.
The gym, because I really, but that's their answer every year. They, they say, either flat, either flat, but they have a better opportunity to do that than us, the county.
Yeah, no, but, but the other towns were doing that as well.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, the county says that every year, oh, we're gonna raise in taxes. But that's not reality for us a lot of times. And I mean, just, just we get whacked with just an increase in healthcare and pension and we're up a penny already, you know? So it's an unrealistic figure from the county. But yes, I agree with you. I have talked to people too. They are trying to keep it flat because.
Yeah, just, just because the unknown of this year and the fallout of COVID and I don't think the fallout's happened yet where we, we don't know it's gonna happen, especially, you know, we have a new president now too.
Yeah, no, I agree, but like I said.
I definitely agree with, with Paul. We definitely need some of this.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, the year you have to be conscious of it, because okay, Joe, you still got more to go?
So I got is the DPW staff and salaries. And I know Bob, I think it was the last meeting and stuff, or the last year's budget meeting, you asked me to, if I knew where we stood along with all of the, the county DPWs, because I know, I'm sure the police department use that as a gauge when they do their contract. And when we were in a union, that's how we did our contract gauging with the other towns that had the union stuff. So I just checked a couple. And where we are paying our, the guys below me, we are not quite, not a little bit off the bottom of the whole scale within the county for those guys. My salary, you've rewarded me, the town just rewarded me well. And I, I guess it was because of my years of service and stuff and I hope it's my performance. But like, say Jeff, he's the, my senior operator truck driver, his hourly rate right now is twenty-five, fifty-three. And just to mind it, here's one, one town starts their labor off, new guy labor. So you don't have a driver's license at nineteen ninety-nine. We just started John Schmidt at twenty dollars an hour and he had to have a CDL driver's license. Their CDL, the same group, their CDL low grade driver is at twenty-nine dollars an hour. And they have an equipment operator at the top of their equipment operator is thirty-five dollars an hour. Am I looking to do that with these guys? No. But even if you don't give us, give me a bump, I think starting from Jeff down to John, we gotta consider a bump. We've gotten three percent raises the last two, uh, two years. And I think it was two percent prior to that, but with the economy and stuff like that, them percentages sometimes ain't cover cost of living. So, and maybe we gotta change something here because those groups have steps after an anniversary date, they get to another position and a bump and stuff like that. So right now, I just put in the three percent raise on our salaries on what you have under the staffing. But I think we need to look, look into that. And I know what you're saying, the economy, COVID, so forth and so on. And but I'll also use the same thing. Two years ago, a year ago, when I looked at it, Greenwich Township is the most affluent township in the county of Warren. And we were up in the, up in the upper fiftieth communities or sixtieth in the state. There, that's, it's out there. So something, if, if the committee agrees, if it, if it's something there for the, the workers, like I said, and I don't think, and I, I'll put this argument out there. I believe that the work that we have done over the last, since I became boss is far leaps and bounds compared to prior to me becoming boss when I was hired in eighty-eight for what we've done. We've never did drain pipes, never did total reconstruction of storm drains and all the construction stuff that we've started since two thousand fifteen. And plus, the committee listening to our, I appreciate showing you that I need the manpower and I'm keeping them working. The guys ain't standing around. We're, we're getting a lot of work done. So like I said, that's what I got right now, but maybe we gotta look into that. If you want me to put something together with some kind of bump or step system, I can do that, work on that for the, for next week and have it to you at the next, for the next budget thing to look at and read over. So I'm gonna go on to the next is overtime. I know I used to average about two hundred and fifty hours. I bumped it down to two. Average about two hundred and fifty hours, I bumped it down to two hundred. Um, and at the rate with the, if it was a three percent raise, so that's there. Uh, the part-time staff, we're going to, we lessened, uh, we added a full-time guy, but we only got one yearly. Part-timer, so that's dropped down a little bit, but he, he also, I offered a, a, a scale sheet on that. And Austin, who's our yearly part-time guy, will be at an anniversary date of. Over four years, between four and six, um, so. That would, if you set, if you do that, that would make him fifteen fifty an hour, if you only gave him three percent on what he's making. That would make him at fifteen thirty, so it'd be twenty cents an hour more because of his years of service. Um, the o- the time for the CDL drivers, that's my snowplow guys and stuff. I averaged it on four additional drivers that, it, because they're not, all of them aren't CDL drivers, so it's between eighteen. Fifty-four and twenty-one or twenty-two something an hour, so I just averaged it out to twenty-three for the budget-wise there. So altogether there, uh, we're at just the base salaries and the part, two part-time positions. Uh, the seasonal for mowing and uh DPW guys uh. For two thousand twenty-one at three percent, it's two hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty-four. You add the overtime and the winter staff in there. And that's if we use that allotment, which we have it in the past, it would be three hundred and five. Eight hu- uh, three hundred and five thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. But we've been hard-pressed the last few years to use everything that was in our salary, and I've seen that, well, I know that. The last couple of years, our salary, our DPW salary, there's been transfers made to other salary. And also I seen there was a transfer from my DPW operating. Expenses this year of a twenty-three thousand dollars to cover other O and E's or other shortfalls.
But Jo- Joe, just a a personal opinion on this, a- as far as the DPW goes. I do think you guys do an excellent job, I mean, I just wanna, I wanna commend you on that. Um, with the manpower that you have and um, with you managing it. It um, I could definitely see a difference in the way that the town is being maintained, so. It it's noticed, definitely.
I agree a hundred percent with you, Frank.
Me too. I do too.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We need to move on, we had a DPW and building and ground show, you wanna go to the fire department?
Yeah, I go with fire department, I touched on, we touched on the big thing there. About the only thing with the fire department, well, not about the only thing, fire department. And like I said, I apologize, I'll, I'll email what I wrote up to yous. Um, right now, I'd like to say we get seventy-five thousand dollars in appropriation. I'd like to bump that to eighty, uh, the aerial truck, now that it's getting older and stuff is. They're a big expense to maintain and to have, but I use the analogy that. It takes three guys to put up a thirty-five-foot ground ladder where one guy can put up this hundred-foot ladder. Because it's all hydraulic and stuff like that. Um, but uh, looking to increase the appropriation to the fire department by five thousand dollars. Um, and we gotta start thinking about, I have two units that are twenty-plus years old. Two thousand Pierce engine was purchased new by the township in two uh, two thousand. And in the two thousand one aerial tower was purchased used by the township placement service July two thousand fourteen. It's took twenty years old this year. That, that aerial tower, two thousand nineteen, the fire department spent twenty thousand dollars to rebuild the motor. But it's also a million-dollar piece to replace. Now, I'm not looking to replace both, I'm trying to do two with one. We get, we replace this aerial, this one has a pump on it, we're running it out first due during the day. Because of the ladder and stuff and do the same thing with a new replacement, the two thousand engine, I would make a reserve. Just to cover when something is broke down or, you know. Down for service with, sometimes when it goes down to the dealer for repairs, because it can't be done out at our location. It's tied up for a week or two. And that, that's more or less the reserve setup that I would do that way. But what's good, like I said, I I hear what you're saying, and this stuff needs to be planned. And as when in two thousand seventeen, when we got the new engine in the chief's truck. You know, I said that if we would've followed. My replacement schedule, the nineteen ninety-two engine would have been replaced in two thousand twelve. Not two thousand seventeen, which would expanded the payoff. We would've been right at the end of the ten years and could've rolled that money that way. Where we're not at that luxury right now. That's, that's it, that's, and just in, in our appropriation. The last three years and this year, we hired a grant writer, the fire department's trying to get an AFG grant to replace our turnout gear or PPE. NFPA and OSHA, NFPA has come out where they're saying our PPE is no good after the ten-year manufacturing. So that's, that would be a hundred and twenty-five, last year's estimates, well, on what it cost was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. For PPE, head to toe for firefighters. The grant would cover all but five percent, so the fire, I had in my budget to hold whatever five percent we needed. Now, we've been successful in the years past getting a a grant, we got fifty or sixty thousand dollar grant, we have a cascade system in. In our building was a fifty, sixty thousand dollar uh grant that fills our air bottles for our air packs. And two thousand fifteen or sixteen. We were trying for grants prior to that, and the township ended up and replaced all of our air packs. Which were in good shape, we're only five years in on them for twenty to thirty-year uh, what you call. Uh, service life. That's it, any other questions?
No, thanks, Joe. You know, every year you do a budget. You know, everybody always says try to run it like you run your home or run your business. And every year I I get, I get to start to feel like, i- if it was a business, I think I'd make a motion to close. Better, I mean, and nothing against, I I mean, it it gets so frustrating that. To run the township, you you almost feel like saying, let's just file bankruptcy and close, which is not, obviously not an option, but. I, I don't see where it ever ends, like it's just. No matter how much you try to play catch-up, you always end up like you're, have a bigger hole at the end than you had the year before. And I don't know, I guess, I'm just frustrated, I guess, I, does anybody understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Like you said, if you ran it like a business, I do make an emotion that we close business as of today, but that's not an option. Well.
And it's, it's hard to justify things when people are losing jobs, can't pay their bills, are having a tough time. Just to maintain their own homes.
Yeah, a- and you know, you know, we already hit on, we're doing the roads and buying the prep gas, gas purchases. I mean, it's pretty obvious, gas prices, oil prices are gonna go up. For us, just think of people who, at their homes. I mean, if their home heating bill went up, just take a simple number of ten bucks a week, that's five hundred and twenty dollars a year. Then if their car commuting gas goes up by ten bucks a week, that's not even a lot. That's another five, but there's a thousand and forty, they're down already, just because of oil prices. Now, you know, everything else is gonna go up because anybody who manufactures is using the same thing. Uh, uh, it's, it's just, like I said, you just feel like you're. Trying to empty the ocean with a beach bucket.
True.
Okay, what's next? Is that all we have on the agenda, Bob?
Yeah, I think so. Um, I guess next we'd have to sit with like. Mooney and. Quite frankly, whittle away. I, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm just not feeling real good right now about the budget process, you know?
Yep.
It's a, it's gonna be a tough year. And, and I get, you know, it's a tough year. Here's the other problem with government, though, where it's a good year, everybody says now's not the time to spend, it's a good year. Then was the bad years, that's not a good time to spend, it's a bad year, when do you ever catch up in government, you know?
Right.
I, I don't know. So, does anybody else have anything else they wanna talk about budget-wise, comments? Am I, am I being too doom and gloom here or what?
Feeling, I have a feeling this conversation is going on in every town in our state, you know?
Two things that I'd like to to bring up real quick, um. One, the money from the old school and the money from the, the house that got sold that we owned. Um, you know, there's no inserting that into the budget because it's a one-time thing, and I'd like us to consider taking that money. And looking at uh, consolidating in an electronic form, all of our records. Um, you know, that way we're not pulling out of any of the budget or anything like that, uh, to do that. Um, I don't know what the cost is, I know that, you know, POHAT is gonna require us to do something with the records over at the court. And we have filing cabinet after filing cabinet of records, um, if we could minimize that. And eventually store that in-house, uh, long-term, it'll save us some money, cuz I know that we're venturing into renting space at the Legion. To store these uh, things, um, if we get the police department out of the basement, we'll be able to store our own in that thing, so. As that's a one-time number, I'd like to throw that out there, that we consider that, I wouldn't have any idea who to call or talk to on the subject matter. Um, uh, I know POHAT did it when they got rid of the old school kinda thing, but they didn't do it for everything. Um, so that's just another idea that's I'm gonna throw out there.
What's uh, what was the, uh, how much did we get again on the school?
Uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm having a senior moment not remembering.
How much, Joe?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, so when there's eighty-five thousand dollars that are kinda floating.
It's not, well, we could always throw it into the, you know, to bring down the budget too, I mean.
Well, you could, but again, that's a one-time number, you're gonna have to replace that eighty-five the next year. And I saw back in two thousand fourteen, when they did that with the uh, red light number. Uh, we all inherited that three hundred thousand dollar deficit that we couldn't replace because there was no red light money. So I don't even think you should consider it for the budget, um, maybe make this a one-time expense kinda thing. So that, you know, in the future, our records will be bitch more managed, cuz, you know, you all seen the courtroom and stuff like that. Our records are in really rough shape, right, Lisa?
Well, my two cents is use that money for a septic first.
There you go, and that, that goes back.
The building again.
Yeah, and that goes back to the budget, right? To reduce the budget, you know?
I'm still working on my budget for next meeting, and that is part of it, I am gathering some numbers for. Uh, scanning of documents, my recommendation would be evaluate what's at the court, because. You had said that POHAT was gonna force us to do that, and if we could do that and the old land use board. Like site plan records and large files, um, you know. That would be my recommendation to get started with that, most of the other documents, it's a six-year disposal, so every six years, we're gonna get rid of a batch now that we've got it. Under control and we'll make, allow Joe to stop moving them back and forth eventually, right, Joe?
That's been a full-time job since I've been here for thirty-three years. I'd have an extra day in a week if I didn't have that.
But, yeah, we did very well on shredding day, right, Joe? We got rid of a lot of stuff, so.
Yes, we did, we've, that, that's, I I was gonna say it's the best job I've seen getting rid of them files since I've been here.
Yeah, okay, anybody else have anything before we go to public comment? I don't think there's anybody on, but we're open and closing just to make.
One other thing there, but just under buildings and grounds and I, this is a maintenance thing that's been overlooked. I don't know who's on the sewer, I guess sewer utility board. But I've, I've been in contact with Chapman and stuff, and here I thought they were doing maintenance on their emergency generator. Well, all they've been doing is checking the oil and stuff. It don't have a lot of run hours, six hundred and forty-five hours on it, but that generator has never been serviced.
No.
No, so I talked to P three who serviced the generator at the municipal building, we set up a contract. And they're willing to add it to that contract, keep it separate. But a major service, which means oil change, checking it all out, would be about eight hundred and fifty dollars a year. And then they do a minor, which is a hundred and fifty, but what they also do, they do electrical output check. And give me a report, that's what they did here, I have it and stuff, but. That's a priority, because that thing I get, I'm on the phone list along with Chapman, I get the calls. When the power flickers and stuff, that the alarms go off and stuff, so I, I, I think. If the sewer utility has it in there, I think that's a priority that we need to add that and and go forth with that, and I. Uh, I have an extension contract here with the approval, the committee to sign off and. Put that on the list.
Well, it's for the regular meeting, Joe, uh, try to get together uh, the numbers, give them to Lisa or in the uh CFO, see if the sewer. Authority has the money, and then maybe we could, I mean, that's really not a lot of money, but that's like a penny.
Absolutely, that, that's, that's important, because all we need is one time that not to start and a power outage.
We're only talking a thousand dollars, right, basically. I thought that ready for the February meeting, maybe we can just approve that and get that taken care of.
Okay, very good.
Okay, anybody else have anything? One question, back to the municipal park, I think that's, is that Green Acres? Cuz Frank, I'm, I'm texting Frank Pinto about it, and he's telling me it is. Don Marie was telling me it wasn't, so I'm not sure if he's got.
That never was Green Acres, this whole, this whole facility where we're sitting on was donated by Wiz Reinhardt.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, I think Frank got it wrong, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this was donated by Wiz, that's why I always thought so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, Frank, to your point, we should check with Frank Pinto, sometimes what.
Yeah, he's checking.
Acres money, they add all of your other parkland into that Green Acres um, registry, if you will. Even if it was like in this case donated to us, hopefully back then, the TC kept it out of that list. But that might be what he's looking at.
Ah, could be, yeah, alright, so I'll, I'll, I'll find out, he's looking at it right now.
I'll make a motion, we have a public comment, anybody want a second?
A second.
Uh, nobody in the waiting room and nobody in the meeting, so.
I make a motion, close public comment.
A second.
All favor? Anybody else have anything else they wanna bring up, talk about? Okay, Lisa, can we get some of these numbers? Is, is Karen still gonna plug some in for us or is John gonna plug some in for us or?
Yeah, I think we'll work it out. Um, Joe, you're just gonna get us that updated information, right? And I'll pass that along to them.
What's that?
Um, weren't there new fire department numbers?
Oh, yeah, I I have them already, so it'll be nothing more than email, email that to you, yes.
I have been keeping them in the loop and providing them with um, all the, you know, the spreadsheets, so.
Okay, and everybody got, they got my email. Do you want me to re-forward the one? I think I sent out the paving worksheet. Last or yesterday?
I didn't get it, but did you send it to my Greenwich?
Oh, okay, no, I sent it to your other one. I gotta, I gotta update my, I gotta update my email addresses for some, some of yous. I guess you're gonna use the town emails.
I'll get it from there, that's okay. But if you can update me in the future to Greenwich, thank you.
Okay.
Bob, John Moody is planning on attending our next budget.
Yeah, next summer, right?
Okay.
Anybody wanna make a motion? Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
You want a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Have a good Saturday and see you next week.
Yes, see you next week.